Okay, thank you and good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the ZBA. My name is Rob Chappetti, I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals and I want to welcome you this evening to our intimate little hearing room. We we seem overly formal because we're A, because we unfortunately have to be, but we also are broadcasting simultaneously in what remains to be the last vestige of the hybrid days during and post-COVID. But nonetheless, we maintain sort of a hybrid online and offline presence for at least the time being. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to just get things started based on the agenda that you may have seen online. If not, everything is followable online and it's being broadcast up on the screen. We follow the flow of the evening based on the meeting agenda and I I start by opening the meeting, which is this evening, May 9th, 2023. Because we publish legally at 7:00 PM as a start time and all the abutter notices and all the legal notices, we unfortunately sit here politely gazing upon each other until that appointed moment and then we can actually say words out loud and begin the business of the evening. I begin by introducing the board, the members and others in the room. And then we will go through a roll call to establish what's called a quorum for those already familiar. In order for us to conduct the business of the zoning board of appeals this evening or any evening, based on the agenda, we must have at least a five-member board present. And so we establish a legal quorum, which is, you know, lays the basis by which we can go further and have the business, conduct the business of the evening. I will designate, as is required, the five legal voting members. That is, that may alternate, I state that on the record, so anyone in the room and anyone listening online knows exactly who is the legal voting member of any given application. That does change based on recusals, conflicts of interest, absences and such. So to make it clear, we we say that out loud, but there's no surprises. I'd like to also then just go through a quick flow of how to expect the business of the evening to go. There's a, there is a tempo and flow of how a zoning board is conducted. If you've been to other public hearings, different boards have different, you know, styles and rigor. Because we're a quasi-legal administrative board, we are a little bit more tethered and beholden to these sort of formal strictures, this this formality. I try to keep it as informal, formal as possible, but I always like to sort of give the lay of the land so that, you know, as my grandfather used to say, you know, you tell them what you're going to tell them, then you tell them, then you tell them what you told them. And if you can, you know, follow that, you know, that formality, you know, people have an idea of what to expect. So it's with that in mind that I just give you a quick intro and overview. I'm going to begin by calling the roll and we'll establish our quorum. I'll then just walk through for everyone's benefit how we will flow in the format this evening. We have two matters that are on the agenda that are both under a request from the applicant to continue. In case anyone's here on those matters, we always like to get those out of the way first and continue them so that no one's stuck waiting around for for a hearing that doesn't happen. And then we'll follow the the organizational structure of what's on the agenda in that order. So beginning with the roll call, members of the ZBA, please kindly respond with either here or present. Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Mr. Walter Buttchannon.
Here.
Mr. Gregory Bennet.
Yes, here.
Ms. Lynn Skow, we know is absent. Ms. Patricia Pecknick.
Here.
And Rob Chappetti, I'm here. That is one, two, three, four, five, six present, one absent. The five voting, and that is a legal quorum, so we can, we can go ahead and conduct our business this evening. The five voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chen and and Mr. Bennet and Ms. Patricia Pecknick will step in on one application for which one of our members, Mr. Chen has a, must recuse himself, that's 28 Charles Street. So Patricia Pecknick, our our associate member, will be the vote, the fifth voting member on that application. When we get to it, I'll just, we'll just make that note on the record as well that one of our members is recusing. So with that, allow me to just quickly introduce the board members and then we'll get into the business of this evening. We have to, to my immediate left, Mr. Ken Swanton, Mr. Walter Chenon to his left, Mr. Gregory Bennet to to his left. Then we have Miss Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Andy Port, our, our planning director. And across the table, the fearless and tireless Ms. Gretchen Joy, our keeper of minutes. I usually pause here just with respect to one of the, one of the frames of this evening when we get to it with each application of the public comment section. During public comment, Ms. Sullivan will put up a slide that just reminds us of the rules of the road of public comment. We ask with, you know, discretion and flexibility that everyone kindly keep any comments to within two minutes, more or less. We do that out of courtesy so that everyone can speak. You do not have to fall into a pro and upon column. You you may, if you wish, say that you are for or against an application, but feel no obligation to do that. Just simply speak, give your name and your address for for Ms. Joy, she'll be keeping. She has the the unfortunate task of having to write down everything every one of us says. So so kindly just give your name and address so that Ms. Joy has that information and then just speak your mind. And we, you know, we give great discretion on public comment, but we ask you to govern yourselves, you know, with that same courtesy. And coming, coming around to my, to my immediate, to my immediate right, we have Mr. Stephen Delisle and then this Patricia Pecknick. And again, my name is Rob Chappetti, I'm the chair. So with that, we will get into our public hearings and we'll start with the two matters, the first of which is a request for a continuance. It's 68 High Street, Travis and Sarah, Summer, care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman and Costa LLC. This is a matter continued from April 11th, 2023. It's a special permit for non-conformities. And I don't think there's anyone to speak in connection with the request. So members of the ZBA, we just have the applicants, legal representative requesting a further continuance. Any comment or any, or do we have a motion to continue?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the special permit for non-conformities for 69 High Street, which is number 23-5, to June 13th of 2023.
And that's the requested date by the applicant and we have that space on our docket. Great, motion is made to continue the matter to June 13th. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chenon, motion's made, made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Chenon. By following the roll and the motion to to continue, we will go, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chenon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Ms. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Pecknick.
Yes.
Rob Chappetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. One, two, three, four, five, that's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it, motion carries, matters continue to that date. Next is Tucker and Helen McCarthy, the owners of the property, as managers of Overlook Holdings LLC. This again is care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman and Costa LLC. And this is continued from that same date, 4/11/2023. Also a special permit for non-conformities, motions, the applicant request continued to 6/13. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to continue the special permit for non-conformity, 31 Ormore Street, to 5/23 DNC 23-8.
Oh, 5/23, my apologies, I said 6/13, that's a different date. Great, motion's made to continue to 5/23-22, 23. Do you have a second? Mr. Bennet, thank you, motion's made and seconded, calling the roll and the motion to continue to 5/23. And Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chenon.
Yeah.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Pecknick.
Yes.
Rob Chappetti, I vote yes, that's six in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries, matter is continued to 5/23-23. We'll jump into now the first of the two full hearings that we have. And just again, as I promised earlier, ladies and gentlemen, we, the flow of any ZBA hearing begins with myself reading the legal, the legal notice, that's the published legal notice that would have been published and mailed to abutters. I read that by the applicant's name or representative name, the property address, and the description of the relief being sought by the applicant. And by that, I mean, we will say out loud whether the applicant seeks a special permit, a special permit for non-conformities, some variance, et cetera. And then finally, as a, as a, you know, sort of a, a natural, real language descriptor, I'll simply describe what the applicant seeks to do so that one needn't have to be God forbid a lawyer or worse to understand what the applicant is asking for. By that, I'll say that the applicant seeks, you know, permits to extend or expand a porch or, you know, demolish an existing room and what have you. So it'll be very clear in real language what exactly the applicant seeks. After I read the legal notice, we open the floor to the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak and present the application. Ms. Sullivan will be walking through any slides and materials, all of which is online. Anyone online that's watching as well has the opportunity to see these same slides. So that anything being referenced is put up on that board so that anyone online or here in the room can see it. We then will go through and once the applicant finishes the presentation, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. And that's when we go to public comment. And as I mentioned earlier, there'll be a slide, just given the rules of the road, we ask you to, you know, exercise courtesy and discretion. We're sure everyone will and we, we never have a problem with that. But we extend, you know, extra time when it's appropriate and we, we want to hear from anyone who has any comments. Just raise your hand, give us your name and address and speak your mind. Once we go through, everyone in the room with a raise of hands, I will go through anyone online who is virtually raising their hand. And if anyone's online listening, the way to do that is to simply virtually, virtually raise your hand on Zoom and we will see your hand, we will recognize you and then we'll unmute your mic, we'll ask you to do the same. Once we get through public comment, we then close that portion of the public hearing and we go to questions from the board. Members of the ZBA will ask questions of the applicant, applicant's representatives, and we'll go through every member that has questions and we'll try to get all of those addressed. Once we've finished that round robin of questions from the board, if any, we close that and go to the final portion, which is deliberations. This is the, the, you get to hear us think and and toil out loud on the legal criteria that is required to be found by the Board of Appeals on any element of relief that's being sought. So if the applicant seeks a variance or certain legal criteria, we will say what that is. And then you'll hear the board members deal with the deliberation of whether the applicant has met that burden and if so, why, if not, why not, et cetera. The board members may, board members may have additional questions and we, we cross those bridges as we, as we come upon them. Once we have gone through deliberations, we will close that portion of the public hearing and we then entertain a motion from any member of the board. You will hear the motion in the form of a motion to approve. That doesn't mean the, the board member is going to support the application or plans to vote in favor of it. It's just simply under Robert's rules of order, the matter is made in the affirmative. So you will hear a motion to approve and then that motion is seconded. That just places it on the floor for a vote. We then take a vote and in order for an application to be successful, it has to receive four votes of yes. And as I mentioned, we have five, five voting members, so four have to vote the affirmative. If that happens, the motion carries and the application's approved. Then essentially that is the, that is the, the exhausting lay of the land. So I apologize for that detail, but I also thank you for your, your indulgence. So with that, we'll go to the first application, the scene to see, the application of Derek Lively, 20, on behalf of 28 Charles Street, Unit B. This is a variance, the applicant seeks a special permit for non-conform. Actually, this is not a variance, is this a special permit for non-conformities?
Right.
Yeah.
Apologies, that's my mistake. This matter is a special permit for non-conformities based on a revised zoning determination. The applicant seeks to construct a single-family addition to the rear of the exit of an existing non-conforming structure with a lot, with a lot with two single-family structures. Prior expansion of lot coverage and non-conforming setbacks on the other structure granted through prior, through a prior variance of a proposed addition expands a non-conforming lot coverage and expands non-conforming side yard setbacks. With that, may we hear from the applicant?
Hi, good evening, my name is Derek Lively, I'm the general contractor. And that's to represent and move board on the project for 28 Charles Street where Michaelson and Jessica Olsen reside. And we have submitted some plans with what is existing and what is proposed and along with some viewpoints and angles that surround the property as well.
You wanted to go start, after you've got your one, we just start going through some slides? Yeah, I mean, I, I would say just move us through as though no one remembers, you know, prior material, just kind of give us the big picture.
So we're asking to, a request to review the special permit for non-conformities due to recent revised zoning determination dated on May 3rd of 2023. And that is in the document. So we can see the home where it exists on 28 Charles Street. It's a, it's a special property, it has two homes. Within that property zone, you see how they did, second house being set back from the road and actually just, you know, not intersecting with this other single-family home with about four feet of clearance between the homes roughly. And as you can see, the south end is a very close technical community for, we're all involved there. So we seek, so we leave and asking for a permit to give them an expanded deck on the rear of the home, which also would include a section or a screened-in porch with screens on. That is the existing home as it stands. And there's a small deck and porch there, which they would like to put a roof covering that would enable them to exit the existing sliders to a covered area, which would turn into the open area, which would be a screened-in area and also extend the deck up. And if you can see this bush line that's here now, we have, it's approximately that distance where they have an existing deck and an existing patio. We're just kind of going to make it one, one space for them with an outdoor deck and a little screened-in area to go along with it. That's the zoning makers, I don't know. That's, yeah, I don't know how much you want me to expand on that. We need to touch on that, then we can go into.
Yeah. Yeah, you go back to this. Yeah, Mr. Lively, if you want to just, if we can go back to the previous slide, just walk, I mean, we see the matrix, but it's, just walk us through what it is and what it will be, all right, you know, for each of those dimensional elements.
Yeah, so we had, I gotta let Mike know more. Side setback and so the, it echoes from 28 Charles Street. So basically, the changes here are the lot covering, so we're adding the, the deck is in the screened-in portion of 12 by 15, plus the additional coverage. And then the side setback, you notice on the front, or the front setback is the same. The rear setback is, this is 37 feet proposed, right now it's 59 feet. So it's quite a bit of a way to reach that back. The other change is really the side B setback or the it's not the updated one, side B setback is actually, yeah, currently it's 1.42. As to the limit, the change is the, the building is going to be put in there and actually further in than the current setback. Approximately two and a half feet on the lot line. So it's really just continued, non-conformity on the side B setback is continuing out toward the rear and then the lot coverage is increasing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Okay. And I'm just one, this just shows the dimension, you can see on the, on the side of the current house is 1.42 feet from the lot line, right there. And then the proposed deck is roughly about two and a half feet, can't see the exact number there. And you can see the, there's about four feet between the two, two and a half story house, which is the other family, a house on, on our lot. About four and a half feet between their house and the deck. And then the dimensions on there, but between their house and the actual screened-in porch is about 10 feet. And one of the things we try to do here is be considerate of our neighbors. Since that house, the two and a half story house, the Greens, is already very close to the house and the corner of the houses about three, four feet wide, whatever the distance. So we moved the structure itself as far as we could to the, on this diagram, to the right, closer to the fence. So we give them as much room as we could on their side of the house. Outside their house just has two small windows and it extends past the first window, but it doesn't cover the line inside of the second window. So we tried to put it in place, be considerate so that they, they had still, you know, a good view out their window, the two small windows that they do have. And we didn't, they didn't have a wall that we're looking at when it came out, or when they looked out. Then on the other side, 26 Charles Street, there's about 14 feet between their door, the end of their house and the fence and another footer spoke from that structure. So and we also talked to Kathy who lives in that house. This, you know, we gave him a picture of the, of the, of the structure and explained everything, answered any questions. And neither the Greens or Kathy, or even the people on the front, Thomas Kennedy, Richard, they all didn't have, none of them had issues about, you know, the placement and size and, and everything for the, for the structure.
Very good, thank you, sir. Mr. Lively, did you want to walk us, or Ms. Olson, did you want, wish to walk us through any of the other remaining slides? We'll just pick up in there.
Sure, this is, the, you know, Charles Street runs alongside and this is a, a totally base-turned home, which the front door is, you know, technically not facing the street. It's facing the front yard that's actually shared with the houses to the left of that photo there. And the viewpoint gets a little skewed because as you can look in that far left corner, you actually see the other house. And on the overview plan, you can see how, how close it is and how the homes are. So that's just the front-on view. We would be traveling through that area as we create that pathway and egress to the backyard and the back of the house. Where before the demo and currently, the homes were linked by that existing deck. The deck actually created a, a step over to get back there. And now we're actually creating a four-foot wide egress so that machines, people, everything can be easily accessible back there. Whereas before, they would have to literally pick up one more from the rear shed over the deck, bring it down to the front to even that. So for all conveniences and all emergency situations, I think we're improving the tough situation that they're in already right there. So if you go to the next slide, this is the, what would be considered the, from Charles Street, the right side of the home, which is actually the rear side of their home. We can follow that along. And this should goes the property line, how close the home is to the next driveway. The retaining wall that's there travels all the way back to the fenced-in area and then it goes even further back to the end of their property. And this driveway obviously accesses the neighbors' two front doors, but their own condo situation is similar where one of the front doors is in the driveway a little bit earlier and then the second home entrance is further down the driveway on the right as well. So, and then if we go over the next slide. The one on the top left expands the view to the neighbors where we were just, you know, just living. And then the second photo actually shows how close the house is to the blue home, which we're proposing to put the, the deck expanded and, and screened-in area on. They're very tight, very close. Is there any question that anybody has while we have?
Well, we'll, we'll get to the questions part, but, but thank you and then we, we, you know, we surely may, but anything further?
Yeah, so it'd be, I guess you can see on the bottom drawing, you can see that the structure itself is to the far left. And then there's a little bit of any overhang over the, the doors, the sliders. And then, so there is, like I said, I think it's about 10 feet between the structure and the yellow house. And then between the structure and the neighbor's house is about 15 feet. We're trying to maximize those distances. And then it comes out, as Derek said earlier, comes out to be just beyond where the bushes are on the top picture, that's the extent of the deck. And the structure itself is, is actually seven feet in from that, place of the, 15 feet out and then the deck 20 feet out. So it doesn't extend past, you probably can't see in there, there's a couple of windows on the yellow house. It extends past the first window but not past the second window.
Very good, okay. Anything else you wanted to add? Do we have any other slides? One more information.
Just picture.
Okay, so there it is, as our holiday sketchup technology is providing us a virtual view of what it would look like as opposed to where the home is going to sit, the open space between the home and the, just the shed type style roof over the sliders so they can, you know, bring food out with the, getting soaking wet to the, to the screened-in porch area on the deck. That again shows, yeah, and then that's closer view.
Right, yeah, that's, that's very helpful for the debate. Okay, and that rendering is the screened-in, right, porch? Okay, thank you very much, anything further?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know what else to add right now.
There's support letters, there's slides here that I was trying to go.
Yeah, I mean, make sure you feel free and don't, don't feel any reticence. So there are slides that you've up that are loaded, we'll, yeah, just go right through them. We will make sure that we have everything in the record.
Just wanted to mention again, we did talk to the neighbors and we have the letters and the package on both sides, the Greens and Kathy and then Tom and Bronn. And like I said, we did talk with them and none of them had any issues and they were all very supportive.
We're just going to zoom, I'm going to, I've asked Ms. Sullivan to zoom that in. Okay, so this one is.
Tom Kennedy is at 26A.
Got it, and so if we're facing, if we're facing the structure from the, from the roadway, that's to the left or to the right?
To the right.
To the right, okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're in the front, so they're going to be. All right.
No, no, please, I apologize.
Yeah, so they're there in the front, 26A. So then the front third house is actually, you're facing the street and they have a, a door that's on the side, but it's not, it's still facing our house, their current house, Scott has instructed, there's no, but they can view it if they look from another door and look to the right. And then 28, 26B is on a different page, Kathy's on it as well. And she, her door, her front door is definitely, she goes out a front door, she's looking straight at our backyard. So there is a fence, it's 14 feet away, which is elevated because there's a retaining wall. I have six foot fence and then structure beyond that.
That's what this looks like when they come out of there. So this is what she's viewing currently is the fence and the house is going to go up behind the structure, will go up behind here.
So we add one more in.
So we have a couple of units on the.
If, if, we, we keep, we, we have to keep that, that's okay, if you like, in the record. But thank you, that's, that's helpful. Okay, if there's nothing further, thank you for the presentation on the application. We'll close that portion of public hearing and go to public comment. And we'll start with anyone in the room, just show hands if you wish to speak in connection with the application, either for, against, or just because. Raise your hand, seeing no hands. We'll go online, we just have one individual online via Zoom. And if there is any wish to speak from our online participants, seeing no show of hands there, I will go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we'll go into questions from the board. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, I'll go first. So what we're talking here is about, you want to put about a 12 by 15 screen porch, basically where your deck is. And your neighbor, the one you share the lot with, 28, the one right to the line of your house, you have a large support from them.
Yes.
And then the one across to the right of your house with A and T, you have large support from both of those folks that can see you. Okay, I'll just verify, I really, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton, any, any other members of the ZBA wish to pose any questions?
Yes, Ms. Bennet. I admit I was confused by the fact that the different places in the record, there's 28B, 28.5, 28, 8, 28 and a half. So I was trying to figure out who was signing the abutter letter. The abutter letter says, I understand that the screening structure will be no longer than 12 by 15. Do we have evidence that the abutters know the dimensions of the deck in its entirety as 22 by 18? And do they know that the deck extends past the first window of the house?
I mean, I think that, that was, that's going to be part of the materials that are on file, is that, is that right? Has anything, has that changed since?
No, it hasn't changed. So we did show the pictures that are there or some of the pictures, we did show, we gave that to our neighbors.
Okay.
And said ahead of time, but since.
What I'm asking though is the abutters signed a statement that said, I understand that the screen structure will be no larger than 12 by 15, but the total dimensions of the deck are 22 by 18. But the total dimensions of the deck are twenty two by eighteen. So I'd like to make sure the butters understand that it's twenty two by eighteen inch deck. Twelve by fifteen of which will be turned again. That's what I'm asking.
It's, it was, that was, at the time that I talked to them and they signed the letter, um I did walk. And and show them, especially the uh the Greens, which is the yellow house, very near door. We were in the backyard and I showed them what the footprint was gonna be, where it was gonna point out to, so. Now. In the letter, I guess, uh because we you didn't mention like that that's all that you mentioned, but. Right. And so I did walk, yeah, I did walk.
They were provided with, I I apologize, they were provided with the relative scale of that drawing and and respect expressions of a fair one for sure. Uh but, you know. I imagine that if they saw that in the intimacy of the space itself. Um. That, you know, that's, that would be what the butters saw, so. You know, whether that translates into the, you know, dimensions exactly or not, I think the relativity of it, it looks like they present as valid.
They want it, they want to stay as.
Oh, yeah, so they understand it extends.
Yes.
So they'll look out the window and.
Yeah, I explained to them. Um how far the deck came out, it relative to the versions there and how close it was to the house.
Okay, okay.
And then how big the screen in part was, you're relative to.
To the total deck area, okay. I just, I read there a butter approval carefully and I'll do the different dimensions, the total versus. If I understand that, thank you.
Excellent. Um. Any other questions in the board?
Um would you just mind putting the uh renderings up? I just ask, if you just comment a bit about the materials that kind of the. Boy here. Now, now the rendering was the opening.
Yeah, right. Uh it's going to be framed um open. Um with open cymbres, you can almost see through that um. Clear, where it's only filled in with siding is we've made it transparent, almost like you can see through to the roof, like they're gonna be exposed. Uh roof members um inside that covering um with just a. A center light inside, so it's gonna be um. You know, framing, we, he may decide to just uh. Be bored, small areas up there to give it some kind of finish. But uh there are no windows and it is a hundred percent screen all the time, so it's just a framed structure and. Uh wrapped with, you know, white um probably PNC. To detect from the elements. And that, you know, exact or timber tech that and with, again, same exact uh time to frame around the the bottom skirt of the deck.
That's all I have.
Yeah, this.
Very good. Thank you, Spick. Uh any other questions? Um I don't have any either uh. So uh unless there's anything further, I'll close that portion of the public hearing and. We will go into deliberations. Again, um we are deliberating the criteria for a special permit for nonconformities. In order to grant your special permit for nonconformities. Board must find that there will be no addition of a new nonconformity uh and that um. We must also find that the um proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental. Um to the neighborhood uh than the existing nonconforming user structure. And with that, we'll jump into deliberations again. Uh Mr. Shannon has recused himself, this pack that will be deliberating and voted, so. Uh why don't we begin with uh Mr. Swanton, just because. If we got here, we have, I'm feeling good energy right here.
There you go. Uh well, there are, there are no new nonconformities. So then we have to look at whether what is proposed is more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there. Um. And the way I look at it, it's a dale and it's a screen porch. Um. Sometimes we consider massing, if there's a lot of massing, but. You know, the size of the structure, how much bigger it's getting, but the, it's a screen porch and the. House next to you on the right, twenty six A and P is, it's already a pretty big house. Uh yours is an unusual situation, you have two houses on a lot. I've been here years now, not seen one down here, two houses on a lot. I do live in the Southland, I know it's kind of a. Dense neighborhood, uh so I get that. Um you not only have a fairly big house next to you diagonally across from you, you have gigantic old steam mill. Uh this force is strong, so I mean, it's, I don't think this is particularly uh. Too much massing for the neighborhood, so. Without new nonconformities and I, I, you know, I I also think the, I'm very glad you've got letters of support from your media butters, the guy you shared a lot with. And the person right to your right is very important in this situation, I'll tell you at all this. So with those letters of support and with the fairly minimal. Project here, uh I can support this project and vote in the affirmative.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swan. Um further deliberations, I won't do the round and oblong thing, I think we can just. Yeah, we have further deliberations, just.
I'd be glad to wait on this.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. Well, I followed Mr. Swanton has ticked off. Uh the concerns and which is that that uh I focused on, this is obviously a very cozy little neighborhood. And um the scale of the of the porch. Uh certainly supports with the existing structure and certainly. It's not uh by way of scale and mass and of course size. Uh. Not compatible with the neighborhood, in fact, it fits quite nicely in the neighborhood. Uh. A lot of coverage was from twenty eight to thirty one, give or take. Um not significant in my perspective, certainly not a substantial, no detrimental. Uh to the neighborhood, uh I too am. I'm moved by the letters, I support particularly them. The letters funding the uh home and. That shares a lot, so I took it in for the press.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Anything further?
I would agree with Mr. Swan and Mr. Bennet.
Very good. Um. I I do agree, I I wouldn't have anything further to add, but very thoughtful and and um. Complete presentation and I I like the colleagues, I'm moved by the most acute. Acutely impacted. Um parties being the neighbors, speak in favor of it, speak behind us, I mean, and like.
Yeah, buy them dinner. That's, that's great. I I would have checked maybe.
Very good. Um okay, so with that, um I will close deliberations and thank you all for your deliberations and I will now go to uh entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities for twenty eight on Charles Street, we need the.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Motion's made by Mr. Swanton and seconded by.
I'll second that.
Wow, thank you. Uh motion's made on the motion to approve this special permit for nonconformities. Motion uh by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Mr. Delisle, calling the role, Mr. Swanton. Yes, Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Miss Peck?
Yes.
Well, Chappie, yes, that is five in the affirmative, the eyes have it, motion carries. Congratulations and good luck. Thank you for your, for your time. Uh okay, moving to the uh next and final application of this uh this is a short evening for us, which is always nice. Uh this will be application of Christina and uh Tanning?
Hi.
Tanny, thank you, sir. Uh Kurt, uh the application is for forever drive. Uh the applicant seeks a variance to construct a two-story addition to the rear of the structure that creates a new nonconforming rear setback. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, I'm running sideburn and joined with with Christina. Um. We're the owners of Bor ever Drive. Um our architect of records, Joel Gagnon's, and the whole of the architecture all quick. Um. Um yeah, so uh. A Royal Barry's Booth's, the Cape uh house located at the corner of Ever Drive and Bennett Drive. Um. Previous owners, we've owned the property since June of last year, previous owners have added shed dorm to the um to the existing cave elements. They've added a breezeway to the left and a and a garage at some point in the nineties, I believe. Our proposal is. To add an additional ground floor bedroom um with um. Farmers porch to the side and a. Creation of that ground floor bedroom and a master bedroom on above, which would join the. The existing shed dorm. Um as part of the the process. We're, we're a young family, we have a child at home, two-year-olds, and we're looking to. Um saying a family at at a point, um we are looking to make the house. Stay more comfortable for ourselves, so created an additional bedroom on the, on the second floor. Uh we also both work from home, um and we want to create uh further space within the property for ourselves to 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 do that. Um the lot itself um. Is ten thousand seven hundred um square feet on a on an R one zoning. We're. Existing nonperformance over the garage and to the front and to the side. Um as part of the the design process, but our architect, we looked at a number of different options, one of which was going over the breezeway and the garage to. Create that additional bedroom, but we're already in a nonconforming. Um area, so we'd be looking for a variance as is. Um and our proposal was to go up the back here with the um fifteen by twelve. Um. Proposed size with the four foot six. Um. Farms portion. And if you wouldn't mind giving them a speech for. Um so yeah, we're, we, we don't, we're not changing the overall height of the structure in any way. Um this is how it looks from the Everett Drive. Um. Side of the house, there's no false change dash. And go to the next one. Uh as it stands, this is the current view from the back of the property. Uh we will be coming out on the left-hand side by that um. If you wouldn't mind zooming in, please. Yeah, uh where the, where the bulkhead is, we'd be coming out twelve feet from there. Coming out through where that ground floor bedroom or ground floor bedroom window is on the left-hand side and we'll be joining on the shed dorm or on that pop window. Um and here's a a proposed view of the the property from the rear. Um the. Farmers porch outside of us. Um yeah, you go to the next, please. Uh yeah, from the. Looking towards then drive, um. Obviously, there'd be no change with the garage in the top and at the back side of the property looking towards um Dennis Drive. You'll see the uh. Two bedrooms stacked on top of each other out that way with the bulkhead facing towards you. Um yeah, mind going to the next. And then this is the view from Dennis Drive looking back towards the property. Um you can see the existing photograph. Um from broad angles. Would be extending out, as I said, of the twelve beach um with a slight dorm or roof. Facing this way with a window um and that farmer's porch was a side entrance door.
Just to, just to add, the farmer's porch on the side was just to make it blend in with the neighborhood and make it look like a little homely feel. Um that my husband mentions, we only have two bedrooms upstairs right now, so the idea of putting a third so we can accept our family. Um we are so excited to be living in Newbury Ford and have got to know a lot of our neighbors um and really hope we can stay in this home and for our family here, so. Um that this is kind of what our extension is hoping to do. Um a lot of our, the letters of the time were a great idea. That is our first time homeowner, I wish I knew to do that. Um but we talked to a lot of our neighbors, some of which were willing to come tonight, but they're in their nineties and we didn't wanna put them out, but um. We have a lot of support from some of our surrounding neighbors, but at the same time, we didn't wanna impose any on them. So when we saw them on the neighborhood, they've been over to our house for barbecues and parties. St. Patrick's Day parties and things like that, we talked to them about this extension. Um so yeah, we're just excited to be here and excited for an opportunity.
Um uh thank you. Purpose of that, that um farmer's porch to to bring out the four and a half feet. On the width, was to create uh headspace on that upper space, so it's usable. Um. We obviously want to have a a a usable space on the on the top floor.
Hmm.
Um it's, yeah, um is it possible to to look at some of the the planned drawings?
Yeah, of course, please, please be ready to just, yeah, move us through everything that you have.
Um yes, these are the the the. The elevation drawings, which you you've just seen, if you wouldn't mind just going to the the plan view, so this is um. The existing uh plan for the first floor um. As I say, we're coming out that backspace, the fifteen by twelve with the the farmer's porch opposite the side with a full basement. Um underneath us, the the existing cave property, the original element of it already has a a has a full basement done it. Um. Yeah, could you jump on to the next? Yeah, and then this is how it, how it will look tied into the um. Into the property on the, on the upper floor. Um as you can see, the, that. The overhang of that um dorm on the Dennis Drive side of the property. Would not possible without that farmer's porch. Um and that would not give us that um that usable headspace in that, in that part of the property. And I'd hate to think that's. Like for me, is, is Joel, wanna add anything to it, put it on the call?
Um. Let me uh, we'll, let's. Yeah, so I, um thank you, Mr. Kurt and and Mr. Kurt. Um. Let's see, uh yep, I do see Joel. Uh Joel, if you can uh hear us, go ahead and unmute your mic, uh and we would be happy to hear from you as well.
Sure, can you hear me? I'm sorry, could. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um so the, the other, the other thing that I wanted to just bring up in terms of the design and the placement of this particular addition is. Given the shape of the lot being a corner lot, um the placement of the existing house on the angle sort of renders most of the lot. Um would need a dimensional variance, no matter where the addition would go um to some degree. This just sort of had the least impact going off the back of the house. So coming off the side would have been ideal, but that really would have encroached on the, the front setback on Denit. So this, this here seemed to be the best position for it and to slide it over uh more towards the garage side. Would have interfered with the existing bathroom windows on the first and second floor, uh thus removing natural light and ventilation from those rooms. So um and then the, the porch, the other architectural reason for the porch is A, for whoever the guest is, they've got a place to sit um when they're visiting. And um also it softens that edge of the house. So that the roof line is brought down to the first floor, so it's more cape-like even on the side.
Very good. Um was there anything else you wanted to add, Joel?
Um no, just that in terms of, you know, seeking a dimensional variance, you know, the, the hardship does fall into the shape of the lot. Created by the positioning of the existing architecture. It really, um you know, and in comparison to some of the other neighbors. Yeah, uh you know, throughout the neighborhood, um if you sort of, if you've had a chance to drive through there or just look at some of the, the aerial shots. Uh many of the houses in there were built pretty close to some of the property lines because the zoning was different back then, so. We're free and clear farther than than the two abutting neighbors to um all of the property lines. Um and it's in greater conformity than the, the front of the house over by where the garage was placed. So that's, that's all I needed to. Say on the, the reason for the, the request for the variance.
Very good. Uh thank you very much. Um and uh Mr. Mrs. Kurt, anything further you wanted to add before we move on? Okay, um thank you very much. So with that, we'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing and go to public comment. Uh anyone in the room, sir, and uh just give us your name and address.
Name is Paul Klafton, my wife Sarah, uh we're at One Chatty Way. We are the butters to the rear. And uh we're kind of opposed to this variance request. Uh we feel that it's going to be further approaching on our privacy. And could potentially impact property value down the, down the line. Uh we're already, you know, our house was built. Close to the property line and this addition is now going to put, put the addition probably within about thirty feet of our bedroom window. Uh and even even then the farmer's porch is going to be. Looking pretty much into our family. And that's, you know, really will have kind of been paid on our privacy. Uh unfortunately, we were not one of the neighbors that were queried about this addition. So, you know, we never had a chance to voice our. So, you know, we never had a chance to voice our. Thoughts or our concerns uh relative to both. Uh, I don't know that the. Shape, the placement of the. It helps on that lot really constitutes a, you know, you know, a hardship. It's very common within the neighborhood, the houses to be shaped, you know, placed on the lots, a corner, yeah, angle. Kind of based on mostly on the houses that are on the corners, such as ours and and other caves in the neighborhood that are. On a corner lots. Um. You know, you know, kind of looking at the, getting an education here, uh, looking at the what what constitutes a hardship. I just, uh. To me, anyway, I couldn't see that uh this represents a hardship request. Uh, there's nothing unusual about the land or the topography or. Uh, there's uh. Doesn't seem to be an extreme financial hardship to uh in place here to maybe construct. Uh, on another part of, or maybe over that garage, over that breezeway, but there's already a non-conforming setback. Rather than creating another non-conformant setback by placing the addition here.
Okay, very good, thank you so much, um. Anything further?
Okay.
Thank you. Um. Very good, uh, seeing the other members in the room, uh, to raise further hands, I uh, I will. Close that portion of the public hearing, actually, I'm sorry, there's. Well, we just have one attendee and that is the applicant's architect. Um. So I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing and. We will go to questions from the board and what we begin with, anyone who has a question, wants to start, if not. Mister Spontance goes, gonna jump off for that.
I would go ahead, Phillips.
I just had one, um. Both the architect and the applicant mentioned they looked at moving the um the addition. Further down, and I understand that it was directly behind the house. Um. Take away the bathroom windows, what about if it was behind the breezeway, I mean, is that? That's actually not a new non-conformity, right, it's still. The the house, a dip in, if it was the same side, would be forty feet from the backyard. You split it all the way down to the garage. Is there any reason it couldn't go behind the breezeway?
Uh. The the store line of the the property runs directly out to the left. And run between our neighbors to the left hand side and the garage.
It's still a line?
It's still a line, yes.
So the sewer line comes out the backyard house?
Yeah, correct, yeah, so it comes, it comes directly out. It takes a left. And then it runs uh between our garage and our a butter's that are left hand side of us. Um, furthermore, we also look at that, we. As an option, um. The layout of the property as it stands. Would we be essentially putting a bedroom up or an additional bedroom up the? The kitchen space, which, um. To us, it would have been so it was robbed the floor of the property.
Right, and the breezeway is only a story tall, right?
Uh, correct, and and the garage, the garage, um, on point of also the foundation of the garage is just. Um, it's up on breeze box, so we have to demolish it, but we've built up the top of it.
Yep. All right, all good answers, thank you. There are no other questions.
Um, yes, please. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um. And Joel, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Uh, I, uh, we 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 heard you, uh, just jump in, so we wanted to give you the opportunity to, uh, to address any of the, uh. Or further address the answers to the questions that Mr. Shannon had raised.
Yeah, well, one was, um, one was regarding the breezeway, it is a single story, so trying to put a two-story and then connecting it to the house would have created. Almost a monstrosity and wouldn't have done much justice to Royal Barry Wills, who is probably the designer of that that home. I want to address the privacy issue because currently. The um, the addition is only going out um twelve feet, and there are currently windows on the second floor. Uh, positioned there, and then down from the, if you're sitting on where the porch is proposed. I I don't see how that's any different from any other house in that neighborhood if two people are in the backyard at the same time, I mean, you're. You know, unless you have a six-foot fence and your chair as well, you know, you're 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 going to see your neighbor, so that's that's part of being a neighbor. Um, so. But again, I just want to reiterate that that it, when you talk about lot shape. It's not so much the fact that the lot itself has to be jigged and jagged and curved and all kinds of other things going on. Aside from topography, lot shape can also be considered the systems and structures that are pre-existing on the property. Which then make it near impossible for a homeowner to do anything without seeking relief. Um, that is the whole point, I mean, coming in for a dimensional variance, um. I know I've, you know, in Newburyport, I've had them done for geography and and for lot shape. Um, it's it's valid, we're not asking for a tremendous amount, we're not, we'll still be twenty-five feet from the property line. Um, and again, if you look at, uh, you you know, if you if you look at the. The the neighboring, the a butter's house, yes, it is, it is five feet from the property line, so, um. You know, that's, and that's a pre-existing, the the twelve feet getting closer, uh, implying that, you know, two bedrooms. Overlooking his yard is going to create some sort of a privacy issue. I would say that the applicant would have the same privacy issue that, well, gee, we're getting closer and maybe there'll be someone looking in our windows, so. I I I don't really. I I'm not really buying that one, especially having been to the house numerous times and walking the lot and, you know, trying to be conscious of that as well. Um, so that's all I wanted to say in in reply to the, um. To the to the negative comments regarding the project.
Um, if if I might, Joel, I just want to make one response, and I I I can't help but indulge myself in this, so. I'll ask you to kindly indulge me in it, um, the comment you had made, and I think the analogy, uh, you drew. I I I just want to point out. It 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 may not necessarily resonate in the same way. Uh, or in the spirit in which I think you intended it, because that, hey, you're closer to me, so I'm closer to you. One of those two scenarios is is self-induced. While the other isn't, and I think that's a, um, I think that's a a palpable distinction. You know, I don't think that there's the same, I don't think that there's parody in that, but I I just want to, I want to point that out, um. And and also, just for what it's worth, not necessarily negative comments, just sort of comments, um. In opposition, I suspect, but critical comments for sure. But we don't necessarily assign negative or positive views, at least, you know. We just hear it all, but, um, but I wanted to make sure that I just mentioned that because, um, you know, that's. That's my question, I guess that's a form of a question, yes, but isn't it true that fill in the blanks with everything I just said? So, um, I wanted to give you an opportunity if you wanted to add anything further before we went on to, um. You know, uh, to further go through the the application.
No, and it wasn't my intention to say, well, if you're five feet off, we can be five feet off, I mean, I was just sort of using that as as an example in terms of. Overall proximity and privacy issues and everything else, that's all.
Understood, and and certainly, um, respected, so I, uh, I I say all that with courtesy, of course, so, um. If there is anything further. Uh, we have questions from this panel.
Yes, well, my first question was going to be what the. The property owners have won. I would in France, we say Chantigny, 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 my second question was going to be about the people at Six Everett. My third question is, what is the square footage of the proposed addition?
Uh, it would be. Uh, two hundred and. Four feet overall.
Two or four?
Two forty, two forty-four.
And.
Is that just, that's the.
Double, it's two stories, right?
Yeah, the 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 second floor has dormers, so that cuts out some of the square footage that you would find down below.
And some of it's pre-existing.
It's about two hundred and eighty between the two floors.
Okay, um. Any further questions? Uh, any other questions for members in board?
Okay, I guess I'll ask a question, yeah, the, um. My colleague over here, Mr. Shatton, asked about, you know, if you were sliding this addition all the way down to the breezeway, uh. Wouldn't that fix it, um? I guess, you know, I noticed this twenty-seven feet off a lot line, the porch is twenty-four. If this thing was thirty feet off the lot line, then there would not be a variance, um. You wouldn't have to slide that addition very far to go from twenty-seven point one to thirty. And I I don't think you have, you certainly don't have to all the way down to the breezeway. I guess you made the point that it should be, it's a two-story addition, needs to be on a two-story house, so you don't go to the breezeway, but you could go just. A little bit down, I just would like to hear again why the addition. Needs to generate this variance, why can't it just be slid a little further down?
Uh, you'd like me to address that?
Whoever, um, yes, please.
Um, sure, uh, well, as I said earlier, um, if it slid down, we'd lose the two bathroom windows. Um, in both bathrooms and, but e- even more critically from a design point on the interior. The way to then enter the second floor, uh, would be through. Uh, about half of the existing bathroom, and I mean, the house is so. The house is so small now, it's actually, it's a very small cape, I mean, and upstairs it gets even smaller with, uh, you know, the the. The the roof lines, so that that just wouldn't work at all. Um, arc, without blowing the whole second floor apart.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other question, great, um, any other questions before we move on, um? Very good, seeing none, uh, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go into deliberations again. Um, as a board, we are delivering the legal criteria under section ten H uh for variance. The uh, variance criteria requires that the conditions and circumstances are unique to the applicant's lot, structure or building, and that. They do not apply to the neighborhood land structures or buildings in the same district. Two, that strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot's structure or building. In a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners of their neighborhood land, uh, their neighboring lands, structures or buildings. In the same zone of the district. Number three of the four criteria, the unique conditions and circumstances are not the result. Of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of our zoning code in Newburyport, and finally, four. Relief will not constitute a grant of a special privilege inconsistent with limitations. Upon their uh properties, upon other properties in the district, so, uh, with that, we'll, um, we'll jump into our deliberations.
Mr. Chairman, could I pose one additional question before we go to the break?
Of course, yeah, um.
Is there any? Possibility that there could be some sort of vegetative screening between the properties to, uh. To accomplish, you know, uh. The privacy to to get, you know, both sides toward a point where the the privacy issue is not an issue.
Yeah, so, uh, as it currently stands, there's actually a. I think ten foot fence that from the shed backwards, um. Uh, if you, you keep zooming in, actually, it actually said where the stone wall is. So, as you can see on the drawing, there's kind of halfway along the back, um, fortunately, there's a fence, and then there's a low stone wall between. Um, between us and and Dennis Troy, not between the shed and Dennis Troy. Uh, as it stands, we have, um. All ornamental, all vegetable grass between two properties. Um, actually, called it down in the last couple of days because I want to grow that better, go somewhere, but, uh. That, yeah. That can be looked at, it, there currently is tall grass vegetation there and it necessary to be a different level.
Yeah, trees or something like that, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
There actually is a tree, I can honor the property.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, absolutely, um, so, um, circling back then to our deliberations, um. Having gone through the legal criteria, we, uh, I I should also note that. Um, that in order for the, uh. Zoning board to grant this variance, we must also find a substantial hardship, uh, which is neither financial. Uh, or, uh, that is. That literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner or app or applicant. And that desirable relief may be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying substantially or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance and apologies for that. Long-winded sort of detail, but that is the legal criteria, um, now we've said it, um, so, members of CBA, what, uh. What do you wish to say, let us deliberate. Who wants to go first? Or not? Yes.
I, the conditions and circumstances are not unique to the law, since Everett nineteen, then it's done it. And one. Are a similarly shaped corner lots with the houses set in an angle, it happens to be that. This house has a bigger rear yard and. And some other houses have a bigger front yard. But if the shape of the lot creates a hardship here, it would have to create a hardship. On many other lots in this neighborhood.
Okay, um.
And I I also. I'm looking at the, the, there's an assertion that the phrase unable to make reasonable use of the. Property. Is. Co extensive with not being able to build out like a new car lot. And the addition in the rear is very large. The ridge lines meeting, it's a highly visible corner. And I mean, vegetative screening would require full grown trees and. I think it. The light and air for the neighbors that holds the privacy. And the rear, so. Those are the things that I mean about.
Okay, um, I guess I would. And my comments are somewhat. What side of those? I do find a lot. Uh, and the unique shape of the plot. The driving force as it relates to the configuration of of the home on this lot. And I think that. Uh, set that, that is why I think with that criteria, I mean, there are a whole world of other criteria to give it. Yes, that tick off, but. Um, I think the lot shape itself, that you need shape, uh, does, um. Is is unique. And therefore satisfies that criteria, um. So I'm going to kind of drill down on these various other. Factors. A strict application would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of what of the lot, well. Uh, if I hear the evidence correctly. Uh, there has been a thoughtful and comprehensive evaluation of alternatives. With respect to where the building, uh, the addition would be added. Uh, so, uh, I'm. Believe that the evidence, of course, the finding that. That denial would would indeed constitute, um. Uh, uh, an intrusion on the reasonable use of property. Um. The next criteria is the unique conditions are not the result of actions of the applicant, though I don't believe the applicant built. House, uh, in its current configurations on this map. Uh, then the relief will not constitute a brand of a special privilege inconsistent with limitations upon other properties in the district, well. Uh. I'm not sure what that means. Uh, if if if, if I read that correctly, there would never be a possibility of issuance of evidence here in this after this ordinance. So, uh, I will just say that I don't think it's specially, it's a special privilege if you meet all the other criteria, and I think that's a good map. Uh, and then there's kind of this catch-all, which. Uh, refers to whether or not the relief, uh, will be or constitute a substantial detriment to the public good. And. When I think about that, I take seriously the ob- the observations and comments of the neighbor. Regarding, uh, considerations of privacy and the life. Um. I know that, uh. The two-story addition is setback twenty-seven feet, uh, the porch adds a couple of feet, two and a half feet more, uh, which, uh. Obviously, it's not the kind of structure that is used on a regular basis, so it went down in the winter months and. obviously, it's not the kind of structure that is used on a regular basis, certainly not in the winter months and we all know that we sit out on our porches occasionally, but it certainly doesn't constitute the kind of intense usage that would prompt me to believe that it would be somehow uh, intrusive upon a neighbor. As to the existence of the porch itself, one could suggest, well, I don't, I don't really trust the removal of it. Uh, we would gain two and a half feet setback, and now we're close to thirteen. Uh, in my view, uh, the architectural benefits of the porch that improve the house itself and improve the neighborhood as a whole. So, uh, all that being said, I believe the criteria are very important here.
All right, very good, Mr. Bennet. Um, any further deliberations? Anyone else want to comment and add? Um, while you're thinking, I'll, I'll just share my thoughts, um. As a dovetail on Mister Bennet's thoughts and comments, as I look at the lot too, it's unmistakably, it's unmistakable to, to realize how this sort of kitty-cornered um, structure is placed on the lot, uh, and it, what it, in my mind, kind of does, uh, is it creates a detriment to what would otherwise be a, the geometry of setbacks on an otherwise geometric um, linear lot with respect to the rear of that lot, that, uh, those two right angles. Uh, they would meet the setback criteria based on one corner's measurement of the home and not meet it based on the other corner's measurement of the home, uh, the rear measurement of the home to the lot line, principally because of the the kitty-cornered configuration of the house. If it were rotated to be more, um, you know, isolinear with at least the two rear right angles, it seems to me that this house would be better, uh, would better occupy that space, uh, but that isn't something in my mind that, um, that the applicants have contributed to or themselves caused or exacerbated. So it's, I, I too find like with the Bennet that this isn't, this isn't a, uh, circumstance owing to their own, um, actions. And I've, you know, I find the shape of the lot to be peculiar and rare, um. I think that that does add some sense of hardship, um, and places them at a disadvantage in my mind, though I say this with great respect to the Butters. Um, spoken. I wonder, and I just say this outline for us, is there, and perhaps we'll we'll point this question to the applicants, but is there, to the extent to which this board is inclined to find favor with the application, or I don't know that it will. Um, if that were the direction, I would certainly want to condition for myself to create some kind of a green screen at a minimum, um, as a mitigation effort uh, to try to soften the impact of the closest to butter, the neighbors from who we, we heard, but that is, um, you know, that, that's just my thinking, and I'm curious, uh, if anyone else is is in the same spot. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm in similar spot. I mean, I, we, we don't. I haven't voted for a lot of variances in my time here, um. You have to have something unusual with your lot. This is a corner lot, and most of the areas I've supported have been corner lots. Isn't your fault you have two frontages up there? If one of those was a sideline rather than a frontage, it wouldn't be a variance, uh, because you could be twenty feet away and you're more than that. Um, so I, I agree with the chairman over here that you have an unusual lot for which I, I have some sympathy for variance. Um, I do like the fact that you're not trying to go like five feet off the lot. It's, you know, twenty-four for the porch and twenty-seven for the building. I also like the thought of visual screening. You know, when we, um, I see now your head, that's good, but when we sometimes approve of something, we'll do it with a condition that, you know, the approval comes with a condition that you have to add screening. I realize there is some screening, so, but there are rather short little bushes. Uh, you have a shed too, which provides some screening. But additional screening, I think I would find favorable. Anyway, that's my comment. So I could support that with screening and, and realizing this is an unusual lot, and almost every variance I've ever voted for has been a corner lot, and one of these problems.
But, you know, and I'll just, I'll just dovetail it. A corner lot by itself, it, while it used to be something we referred to in the convenient parlance as a, as a Newburyport hardship, um, you know, we have been duly admonished by our legal counsel that no such thing exists in the world. Um, but we, um, we had in the past relied upon that exclusively in our deliberations on variance, you know, a quarter lot in Newburyport at equal uh, basis for hardship. We, um, we have to dig a little deeper now where, if we're really being, you know.
So the corner in the place when the, yeah, this thing happens.
But, but I don't believe you said that it was exclusively that, but, but I do agree with you that it's a contributing factor.
I, I also want to add, by the way, I mean, this house has fifteen hundred eighty-four square feet according to assessment records of living space. This is not a giant house.
Yeah.
Um, so, and the addition is tall, but it mean, I mean, this is not a not a huge project, not a huge.
I'll, I'll do that, Mister Chen, I'm going to play in, um. I think it's too bad that, uh, the addition couldn't be smaller, uh, so it would not be a variance. I, I do think aver, variances are a higher hurdle for us to, uh, jump over, um, it's much easier for a special permit, uh. You know, if that twenty-seven point one was thirty and there was no porch, this would be, uh, I think a cape walk would be something we see all the time. Uh, however, I can't imagine shrinking that addition three feet. You'd have a nine-foot room, um, which is almost unusable under today's standards. And I do think the applicant and the, um, architect has, have convinced me that it would be difficult to slide it. Uh, I think you could slide it a foot and you wouldn't bump into the bathroom windows, but you also would solve the problem. Um, I do agree that the, we have on occasion um, houses that are kitty-corner on the lot with, uh, two front yards that we we do a lot of variances, uh, because of the special conditions. It's, it's not to say that it's unique where there are only three of them in town. There are three or four of them in the neighborhood. Uh, we see a lot of the South End as well, a lot of kitty-corner or two side yards. And we have a great amount of variances, so I feel comfortable that a variance, uh, you know, could be given here. Again, I just wish it was not a variance. It would have been easier had it been in a special department, but I understand now that, uh, from the explanation given by the applicant, that it would be difficult for it to shrink enough to, to fall off the variance and back to a special department. So I I think it meets the four criteria and I could support the application.
Very good. Thank you, Mister Chen. Anything further?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to, um, sort of pick up on Mister Bennet's, uh, consideration of the fourth prong. Um, I do think that the fourth prong, um, what, 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 what I believe that to mean is sort of what the, what the architect was getting at where he noted that, you know, the, the other some of the other homes in the neighborhood are closer to the, uh, to the lot lines than would be allowed now. Um, and I think that, you know, that is something where you have the, it's not a privilege inconsistent with, um, you know, what, what you see in the properties in the district. So I do think that, you know, there is ample evidence that has been presented relative to that fourth, that fourth prong. Thank you for your.
Very good. All right, um, anything further? Yes, uh, I, we, we have some discretion, to say the least, and we don't want to exclude, you know, thoughts, comments, so please.
I just like, I can put another big impression that a variance would bring to with minimal impact to the neighbors. And I feel like this impacts us greatly, especially the floors on the side of the house. We sit in that family room and we have a big window, and it's going to look directly out onto that porch. With the door and steps that go directly toward that family room. And I think that's a big detriment to our property. And I don't think value when we go to south.
I, I certainly.
And it's, I'm sorry, but the screen will make us, because, because our house is so close to the lot. You're looking directly at either a bank of trees or a fence. So our view is impacted as well.
Right, I, I understand. Um, and just to, um, to ensure for our own sense of, you know, balance and fairness, we would want you to know, um, the criteria, you know, we, we take very seriously the comments of what the media partners and what, you know, we appreciate the the passion and, you know, obviously the, you know, the, um, the thoughts and, and sentiment to go into coming into speaking, sharing thoughts with us. It's very, very important to each of us. I certainly know it's important to me. So we, we factor that in for sure. Um, with respect to the criteria, unfortunately, it, it is quite a bit more granular, for better or for worse, than merely an impact on any one neighbor. That's part of it. That's, that's a small part of it. There's legal criteria by which we sort of go through to see, um, whether it, you know, meets with measure or not, but I can tell you that for myself and each of us, we, we do take very, um, great empathy in trying to put ourselves in your shoes as best we can without obviously being even trying to see to the extent to which if the board's inclined to grant an application, is there some mitigation that's favorable or at least better, um? Whether that passes or not is, um, yet to be seen, but I'm hearing from you that, 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 you know, a fence or a green screen is, is not only improvement, though I'll say this, any property owner could do that anyway, um.
Correct.
And, and so there's, there's a, there's a parity in the proximity to a lot line on both sides of the lot line. Um, but again, I, I say this only just as a human being in the world, not as a member of any board, uh, but we happen to be, that, that is, it's important to us, so I, um, I think we're gonna, you know, we'll go through the rest of our, you know, our, um, process, but I want to make sure you've had an opportunity to to add this. For what it's worth, of course, I mean, you know, we, this is a, it's a room of people. Of course.
So the uniqueness of the property, there are other houses in the neighborhood that have a similar lot. So I don't find it, uh, as a unique property that has the only one.
It's not, um, it being the only one isn't one of the criteria, um. And, and it's a very common sort of, you know, complication and sort of understanding this, this already complicated landscape of variants. Um, one of the criteria is whether granting this would create, create some special privilege um, to this applicant by virtue of that lot. And so other lots being similar in that curiosity, right, um, is not unusual. And what it means is that any one of them would have to come through the same process that these applicants must come through. So there's no special grant of privilege here, in that anyone with that similar radius side corner lot would too have to come here, and because any one application is granted, doesn't mean that any one other application is somehow, um, given some precedent. You know, we take each one, the case by case, you know, uh, brand new evaluation. So one application being granted with even the identical criteria doesn't mean the next one in line gets the same result. Um, I don't know if that's helpful or even if it answers the question, but I, I want to share that for once.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes.
I, I, I don't have to.
No, 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 you, we, this, we're this, this is, we're trying to do, um, we're trying to do a good job as best we can with the tools we have, of course. And, you know, factor in the human factor, which is the each of us, please.
Thank you. Um, we, we want to be good neighbors. We would be happy, and if you would like us to put up more vegetation or not, either way, we'd be happy to talk to you about that and do whatever you would like. Um, and Joel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I imagine the porch looking out towards the road. Um, and in addition, we, you really put it on to make the neighborhood look nice. Um, I don't imagine we'd actually sit out there a lot like the gentleman says, you know, who uses their porch a lot, but we wanted to make it fit in with the neighborhood. Um, so that was our main intent with the porch, just to bring, to bring that up again.
Thank you, Mister Curtin. Uh, and, and I certainly say, and I'm sure my colleagues will join me in this, we, we always encourage open dialogue by between neighbors, especially Butters. We live in, uh, enclosed quarters in a place like Newburyport, and you don't have to be in the South End exclusively to be in close quarters with our neighbors. And so this is, um, this is just good, you know, good human strategy to be in the world, you know, so I encourage you to do that and uh, we will see what, you know, how this shakes out, but, um, I want to give you a little latitude to hear from you both and, and, you know, just don't get along further thoughts. Um, so with that, um, further deliberations.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to echo, uh, the chairman's comments that I also take very seriously the comments of the Butters and, um, I have to weigh the, the comments with respect to the the legal standard here, and it is, you know, it can be difficult, but, but I do take your comments very seriously.
Thank you. Um, further deliberations, if any. All right, seeing none, um, I will close that portion of the public hearing and, uh, we'll entertain a motion uh, and or any second and or any conditions.
I will move, uh, that's request for variance application twenty-three dash two for four ever drive. Uh, the granted subject to the condition that, uh, the applicant and the neighbor agree on a mutually agreeable vegetative screening.
Put it through the chair.
Yes, please.
Uh, sorry, just, this is just one of the lenses that I typically look at things through, but, um, still again, as planning director, I, I would recommend a language or a condition of some type that's more measurable um, and picking up the mind of the zoning administrator who has to deal with the compliance of, of decisions. Um, I also would suggest not, um, having deference to another party, uh, whoever that may be, even other city officials per se, um, in the approval of the board grants, that could be problematic as a condition. Just as a framework in general.
You mean another party?
Uh, giving approval, but then deferring, uh, some sort of substantive element of the board's approval to another party. And this case, so we'll operate, uh, in addition, I would say just deferring that to a Butters to work out.
Yeah.
Um, rather than the board deciding or conditioning in some way what that would be itself. Um, and there are some instances, it makes sense to defer some aspect to a city official of some type. There are some conditions that are appropriate in that nature, but um, but I think it's highly unusual to, uh, place the approval on a condition that then is subsequently has to be determined by the approprier and the butter.
Well, I think it's, I, I think the measurable piece, and, and I appreciate that, and the measurable piece would be the installation of a mutually agreeable green screen. You know, is that
I, I, I.
Automatic in the same ways.
Yeah, I would suggest in some manner, i- unless you can quantify in some sort of language, if you will, I would suggest having a plan or some specificity as to what, what type of plantings, you know, where, something of that nature, rather than to be determined by.
Okay, um, how, how about the, the applicant to submit a planting plan to the planning department?
Um, again, i- i- if you could provide any particular parameters that we could know, uh, that would be helpful.
Yeah, you don't, you don't protect the trees either.
I know, it's, it's not, I, it's not that so much that you have an issue with us reviewing some aspect of it, it's more just that, um, a sufficient specificity of the type of boards are cool.
Okay, or have, we can, since, since I heard parties might want to work this out. I don't know, if the party's two weeks, there's, nothing can be worked out. The applicant shall come back to the zoning board and just go to take whatever actions.
Um, I mean, of course, you know, we, we try to get business done as we can, but we also defer to the best result. Um, I, I think that these are, these are sound sort of concerns, um. And since you've, it's clear we heard that there hadn't been a dialogue prior to now. Um, you know, we don't want to, you know, we don't want to create a dialogue and force it down everyone's, you know, you know, down everyone's throat, so to speak. But I will, if you're inclined, I'm happy to entertain a request that we give you two weeks and have you come back at the next hearing and we don't go through all of this all over again. We have, we've opened and closed all of those previous portions. Uh, we would just continue this and pick up from where we left off, um, and give you the opportunity to have a discussion and see if there is some thoughtful versus some rush solution that, um, you know, is better or helpful. And, and the answer may be, we tried and there's, it's not any better or any more helpful, but at least we'll feel as though we've given this full, you know, tenure. Um, do you want to, yeah, it's just.
That, that's playing mine with us. We're also happy to just, um, put any vegetation that they would like us to put out, if that, if they can tell us if they would want us to plant it.
I, I appreciate that, but the problem is that we, we, we're, we're still that, we're back in the same, you know, in the same sort of dark corner. Where we don't have anything specified. We, we just as soon allow you to have that thoughtful and sort of you know, deliberate conversation, then come back to us with a plan. And it doesn't have to be a grandiose plan, just a, we will put four trees of this species or similar, you know, along this perimeter and, or whatever, and then we know, um. And then at least it can be, you know, it can, it can be police and governed and enforced if ever needed. Uh, does that make sense? Okay, um. All right, so, uh, we have a request from the applicant to continue, um, we, um, do we have a motion?
Uh, go ahead, because you did a motion.
I'm sorry, this will be to the board's next meeting.
Yeah, this will be to five. Yeah, this will be to five twenty-three.
So we're not voting on the on the variance request itself here, so just.
We're we're gonna, we're the. Yeah, we're getting tired of this. We are, um we're going to vote on the applicant's request to um continue this, you know, um. To the next meeting for the benefit of the applicants and the neighbors to discuss more thoughtfully. How to, if at all, install some kind of a mitigating green screen, so. Poor Gretchen. Um all right, motion's been made uh by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Mr. Swanton, um following the role, Mr. Swanton.
Yes, Mr. Chen.
Yes, Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes, it's Benning.
Yeah.
Well, Chen, I will guess that the sixty affirmative on the motion to continue, thank you, and apologies, we couldn't get everything finished tonight, but. Uh you know, speed, uh you know, quality over speed is always our preference and and there may be some benefit to this opportunity to chat together.
Okay, when is this being continued to?
Five twenty-three, the next meeting of our of our board, so we meet every two weeks, so it'll be two Tuesdays from.
It will very likely be here, but just incidentally, we don't roll, we'll be up here, so we'll probably be downstairs, then they get our next meeting or do you maybe?
Thank you, folks, for your time and your patience and your comments and to Mr. and this curtain, thank you, we'll see you all in two weeks. Very good, um that concludes our public hearings this evening, we'll close that portion of the agenda, go into the business meeting, we're. Have a motion go approved, the minutes of four twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, we have a motion. We'll move on, motion's double made and and seconded, uh all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any no vote, any nays, no votes, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion carries, minutes are approved. Um Andy, any updates from planning?
Nothing I think I would offer at this time, um other than perhaps. Um some some of you may already notice, there there is a discussion at the affordable housing trust that he's for a night about a potential forty B. Um that has been seconded to us by a developer and an attorney. Um Doug Duchene will be presenting that conceptually to the affordable housing, but I think they're trying to get feedback from the housing, given their role in affordable housing. Uh but that is proposed to be accessed off of a lot on Dexter Lane, uh accessing a piece of backland on one of the house lots that fronts on High Street. Um that's within the um High Street overlay district, but is intended to largely protect those lots in the nature development that that area, so. Um obviously, on my radar is the um our status um under the affordable housing statutes and St. Harbor and so forth and. Uh that project, whether it comes forward in the coming months or.
What's our percentage of uh what what is our real percentage of the forty B?
We we are not at ten percent right now, however, we are in a safe harbor because we produce units in particularly in the forty yard district.
Um thank you, folks.
Um and we got substantial leverage because they are all rental units that Minko has been building, we get all credit for those units, even though only twenty-five percent are affordable, we get credit for all. Right, all units that they build, um and even even with their having pulled permits or going through the process to keep going on to the Route One project they have. After three Boston Way, um we still don't necessarily maintain our safe harbor status beyond March of next year. Um and so I've been, you know, trying to flag it as something we need to talk about, what there's certain things the city can do within its limits, um but obviously, to some degree, developers would be bringing. For projects that would be eligible for permitting that would essentially contribute to the affordable housing stock and maintain safe harbor status, so. That because this board would be acting, and I think it's it's prior to my time, I think it may, you were here, I think when the um the last forty B project was imposed.
I was saying that was behind Woodman Way.
Right.
Oh my, Mariner, was it Mariners Landing?
Uh Maritimes Landing, yeah.
Yeah, that was my first ticket forward back back to two thousand and one.
Right.
Two thousand and one, no, two.
So rewind, sort of revisit, maybe something like that, a very, you know, different type of forty B project, we have to be heard from NED and Avalon, you know, some time ago. About a project in Waterfront West or whether or not a forty B would be used uh in permitting for that. But in either case, um you know, while I am a supporter of affordable housing, I do have concerns about forty B in the sense that it throws all zoning out the window and. The context uh is maybe less relevant for consideration by this board, which would have to issue a comprehensive permit. So that being the case, um I think it's important for us to have the appropriate leverage to review projects under um the forty B statutes irrespective of, you know, whether zoning is in play. Um so we'll be looking to update the regulations that you have on forty B between now and then, but um. I would not say that that alone is sufficient to, um there are other avenues that are better for it to be uh addressing um. Things like safe harbor, and so if you have quite further questions, we're happy to have talk offline, you know, uh if you want to reach out to us, but um. That's something I've just thrown across your radar is update the regulations, I know we had talked about that some time ago, we can put a little bit on the back burner. Um we will be focused on that, given the timeframe going to the next spring, um but in any event, I do, I have had discussions with the mayor and others. Um you know, we will have to work as best we can with the tools we have to try to generate new units that are permitted. Um to try to maintain our our status and either show progress each year of approximately forty-five, you know, you know, roughly. Depending on the census numbers they end up using, or we're still waiting for the to confirm the numbers they're gonna use, but um but. Uh roughly forty-five units, you know, so to speak, to gain a year, um twice that to gain two years, but the question of how how many units we need to reach ten percent is. Uh will be determined once we hear from D H C D about the uh unit numbers that they're using for our inventory.
So so when does our safe harbor expire next year?
March second, I believe.
March second of next year, unless there's another project in, you know, in in queue, uh maybe at the correct permitting.
Right.
Stage.
So we're talking, there are, you know, there's only limited city property available to do it directly, so Brown School obviously has been, you know, some discussions for some time, and I wouldn't necessarily expect that. To resolve itself in time to have, you know, permitting of units. Um Minko, you know, may have other projects that they're just doing, you know, you know, other parties may come forward, but this is the only forty B project that been, you know. Suggested recently.
Andy, um this could be a conversation offline too, but it it remind it, when we talk about like city property, of the short inventory that's left. Um there's there's the kind of active discussions on a possible landslide between the.
Developer.
Yeah.
On this particular project?
Yeah, do you do you know what that, do you know?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't necessarily see any avenue, when I when I did explain to the attorney, you know, when he given to me with us importantly, you know, a few weeks back about this. I I did not see any viability, and and again, I defer to the city council and mayor and something like that, but. I didn't see any viability for them to come forward and ask the city and through the city council to um. Give permission to go across city property essentially to provide access to the development that is ostensibly inconsistent with the zoning for the district.
Yeah.
So irrespective of whether or not, you know.
It's got, it it seems like this project still has some also those geotech. Right, and access, they need to stop as well as their self.
Well, there there are some questions about the plans that they propose and there's, you know, a question, we always have these discussions about open space, whether or not the developer has proposed a. Uh sufficiently as of right plan to use as a comparison for their alternative, um here, there's some questions, we actually. Fuck push their plan back to them and said, you know, give us, you know, a a legible plan that we can evaluate a little more detail. Given that they're presenting that as a baseline, we get affordable housing trust, at least for discussion purposes, um so we can't fairly say that that's an as of right plan, a concept plan. And again, it's not the same unit count or anything, it's a slightly different scenario, but um bottom line, I guess, is um I'm not sure that that's an as of the right plan per se, but um. But it it would not necessarily be consistent with the zoning, I think, uh and so here they'd be looking for a concept, cover as a permit to allow essentially sixty units. Um back there in in an area where we normally would not be allowing that.
Did you say sixteen or sixteen?
Sixteen, sixteen, yeah, sorry, I should bend a little bit more.
All right, no, I thought it was sixteen, no, sixteen.
Yeah.
Very good, all right.
So we'll keep you informed, but I plan on us at least in a fair minimum coming back to you and, you know, wants with updated regulations for consideration, we're working with K P to have them review it, but. Um again, that's just to make sure our belts and expenditures are at least up to date as best we can, yeah.
Thank you, direct support, um. Nothing further, we have a motion with your, I just want to make one, I yeah, you asked me to attend a meeting last Thursday, I went to the first job fair. And I manned the zoning office table, did you, you had any pledges? We had four people a lot of sign up and as soon as they heard we had openings, most of them went over to the playing board table. Anyway, it was fun. I I appreciate, I mean, yeah, I I knew that, like, it's just, I think it's just out of solidarity that we. Oh, yeah. You know, we weren't, you know, be like, you know, our, you know, our our fraternity is full, no more, you know, rush. Yeah. But um but it's important because we're, you know, this is a rarity in my my tenure on the board, as as we just mentioned, was back to oh two. Um we were always on the hunt for, you know, willing, dedicated, you know, and available and qualified people. Because the qualified is really sort of like an anyone, you know, like. But we were like, you know, we were, we were revising that qualification to like. You know, if you, you know, if you have a heartbeat and can get to City Hall, we'd love to, you know, love to have you, but um this is a rarity that we have a full board. The full, you know, uh associate, you know, uh membership, so that we can actually function. Without having to let down, and it hasn't been this way recently, but I've been in rooms that were literally like, you would think they were giving away. Money, and I was in, you know, the council chambers and people were spilling out into and down the hall. Um you know, standing room only on applications like Mission Oak. Um you know, of that of the church and other, you know, big, you know, the the wind turbine. Um Newbury Port Bank and other like giants sort of like big attention. Applications, people were spilling out the doors and it's hard if there's a conflict as there often is because we all in the world. If we fall below that corner, now all of a sudden, we all look bad, we can't conduct this business. And um you know, and it just, uh it's good to have, you you know, I I can tell you, I haven't had a board. Uh this functional and thoughtful and respectful and professional, you know. To disagree without being disagreeable, it's a rare thing to do, so I certainly appreciate it. And thank you for banning that table.
I'm going to adjourn.
Well, we were about to, we not, we had to, you know, we want to hear about the pleasure. Is that all in favor, you had all favor, all in favor, oh. Aye, and the opposed, motion carries.
There you go.
Now you could, I capture that sufficiently for uh for now.